Well, good evening, folks. I will bring this regular agenda, regular city council meeting, excuse me, to order. Could all rise for the invocation that this evening will be led by Pastor Grant Foster from Riverside Church and his main standing following for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilmember Dodd.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you first and foremost for the beautiful city that you've given us to live in, this beautiful little paradise on the sea, and we pray your blessings upon it. We pray your blessings and your guidance on this meeting tonight, Mayor Hill, and the entire council, and especially, Lord, on Joe, we pray your blessings on him, Father, in the days, weeks, and months, and years ahead. Father, thank you for your goodness. Guide this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We do two flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Iavino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any agenda modifications this evening, council?
I'd like to remove item B on the consent agenda. I have some questions.
Is that all?
Yes.
All right, so I'll take a motion on items A and C of the consent agenda.
Just give me a minute. You forgot the presentation.
I'm on the consent agenda. Look, I usually, we usually remove those things under consent agenda. I so much apologize for that. Are there any more modifications? All right, seeing none. Under item six, Proclamations, Awards, and Brief Announcements, we have a presentation by Dr. Henry Fisher. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'd like to also thank the city manager and staff, Mrs. Bosworth and Lisa Fraser, for giving me time to analyze a little of a problem, I think, that we might be have coming. And this is basically an R-10 city with 10-foot setbacks, and it's similar to Port St. Lucie, okay? We're built at about the same time. They're a little more advanced on development. But I have a lot of people come in my office, and I talk to them, "Why have you moved to Sebastian?" And the thesis that I'm getting is, "I left Port St. Lucie because the traffic was 20 minutes in a block." And the reason I left Miami and Fort Lauderdale is basically the same thing. And they're coming to this beautiful city, and I think that it's a perfect place. I hardly ever leave it for more than five days. I can go wherever I want, but I come back, and I love this place, and I think we'd all hear our R-10 people. And I see an ordinance that I've talked to the staff about, and it's called PUDR, and it's pretty wide open in structure, and it says something like they can, the staff is advised on the minimum setbacks. And I would recommend, up against R-10 property, that you have a mandatory statement in that to help the staff design a correct structure for an R-10 city. And we don't want that next to some beautiful homes on, for instance, on Bob Circles, beautiful homes, and they have this five-foot setback potential. I don't know exactly, there are five-foot setbacks in that. And I do know this from experience, that once you let one person do that, everybody else that comes along can do that. And we have wonderful people doing this, but the people that are going to come here aren't going to be the structure that we're used to, okay? Some people are coming from South Florida, doing the same thing they did down there. And my advice was to, against R-10, mandatory 10-foot-wide side yard set, it's a side yard I'm worried about, the side yard of five foot. You can drive to it, you see air conditionings in that five foot, you see trash cans. Eventually, they'll have to enclose those, and it's going to look like a multi-family. We need, across the street from that project, is an excellent, with 10-foot setbacks, your multiple family. And I think that it's important that you give your staff rules in there and change that ordinance so it's not a minimum setback, or there's no clear thing as to what the setback is, and they're using five. And I find that the traffic volume will increase, and then the people with the R-10. And lastly, I'd like to say that in the R-10 districts, you need to tighten up in the ordinance, the industrial use of those R-10 lots by landscapers with two gigantic trailers and people with heavy equipment parked in there, and people parking on the sidewalk. That's just, my opinion, it's not a critique, it's a recommendation that I think might be helpful. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Fisher. We appreciate what you do. Next, we'll have an announcement by Dr. Graham Cox. Mr. Cox?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Graham Cox. I live at 1213 George Street in Sebastian, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Pelican Island Audubon Society. I think, I thank you for this opportunity to make a short presentation to promote a conference coming up on January 19th and 20th, the weekend after this, this weekend, at the Emerson Center in Vero Beach. The conference name is Transforming Landscapes for a Sustainable Future. Our goal is to introduce homeowners, landscape contractors, homeowner associations, city and county planners, and community development leaders to alternative residential landscapes, ones that enhance our yards with native plants as an alternative to nurturing thousands of acres of turf. And I apologize to you for, for dunking that one in there. Instead, we want to encourage landscapers and homeowners to plant native gardens, to plant Florida-friendly trees, shrubs, and bushes, and at the same time, this will drastically reduce the use of chemical fertilizers, pesticides, and herbicides, as well as reduce our use of irrigation water, all in the name of loving our lagoon. At your December meeting, my neighbor who is here tonight, Mark Bondi, introduced the program for the conference, and the conference program is included in the minutes for that meeting, as in your package that you have there tonight. Today, I want to simply encourage participation in the conference by members of City Council and your planning and community development staff. We have a long-term goal to encourage an overhaul of city and county land development codes and ordinances to discourage turf and encourage native plants instead. We also have a goal of persuading the 630 Homeowners Associations in the county to relax their rules and allow residents to move away from grass and go for native and Florida-friendly plantings. To make this invitation more attractive for you, we are offering two free tickets to City Council and employees to attend and discuss how we can make a residential neighborhood friendly to birds, other wildlife, and at the same time, help restore Indian River Lagoon. The keynote presentation on the Friday evening will be by Dr. Douglas Talamy, describing his book Bringing Nature Home and How You Can Sustain Wildlife with Native Plants. Other featured speakers on Saturday include Dr. Edie Widder, who we all know, discussing the health of Indian River Lagoon, landscape designer, Ms. Robin Polansky, discussing lagoon gardens to save the lagoon, Ms. Nikki Monroe from the County Extension Office describing Florida-friendly landscaping, and attorney David Enso explaining how homeowners associations can change their rules to encourage native planting. Pelican Island Audubon President Dr. Richard Baker made a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday morning, describing the conference in much more detail. The 15-minute slideshow he presented is on the county's TV Channel 26, and also available on the Pelican Island Audubon website. I have flyers available here this evening, and I've put them on the table at the back of the council chambers next to the evening's agenda. People can register online at www.pelicanislandaudubon.org. Registration fee is $25, and this covers the Friday evening reception and snacks and box lunch on Saturday. For questions about the conference, I urge you to call the Audubon office at 772-567-3520. And just a one final note for folks who are not familiar, how to get to the Emerson Center in Vero Beach, it's at 1590 27th Avenue, which is the corner of 27th Ave. and 16th Street. There's free parking, there's room for 600 conference goers. I think so far, we've got about 150 signed up, but my experience is, everybody waits till the last minute, and they come rushing in and say, "I want to be there, I want to be there." So we're hoping we can get to a couple of hundred people with this conference. And I appreciate you giving me the time just to do this promotion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cox. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay.
Council, I, I think it would be appropriate to put this on the Channel 25, the flyer itself, that we'll announce that for you, so we can put that on our slideshow.
I say, I've left a bunch of flyers on the backs there, and it's already in the, in the minutes for your December meeting.
Very good. All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I'll lead us up to brief announcements. Mr. Dodd?
Okay, on the 18th, um, excuse me, on the 12th, I'm looking at the year, the Chambers Constitution Park, it's the Penny Creek Band, not bank, I think in the agenda it says Penny Creek Bank, and that's from 5:30 to 8:00. On the 13th, Sebastian River Art Club is having a show in the park from 10 to 4:00 p.m. On the 15th, City Hall is closed for Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. On the 18th, the Phils, actually, 18th through the 21st, the Philsmere Frogger Lake Festival, if you haven't been out there, it's a good time, a lot of good food. And then for the 20th and 21st, the Sebastian Fine Art and Music Festival is having a, is having a fine art and music festival on Indian River Drive near the park.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? There's an awful lot to do that weekend. We got Philsmere and Sebastian, two of our big festivals, so that'll be a fun weekend in North County. Now, council, that leads us up to the consent agenda. Miss, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Kitchen had pulled item B. Council, what's your pleasure on consent agenda items A and C?
Move approval.
Second it. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Iavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yeah, I just have some questions on the R&amp;R fund, Ken, the general fund. I noticed there's some, replace an airport pickup truck in there. We don't normally use general funds for enterprise fund items, so I'd like to see less of that in the coming years, or have them pay us back that money.
Yes, in recent times, since we created the R&amp;R fund, we've been looking at the R&amp;R as being a catch-up for all city facilities, but there have been probably a bit more R&amp;R expenditures that apply to the airport or the golf course than, than normal, so I'm sure that will be minimized.
Going forward?
In the future, yes.
Okay. Then I have no problem approving item B.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Iavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thanks for that. Leads us up to item eight, Committee Reports and Appointments. Eight A, we have Police Pension Board of Trustees. We need to confirm the fifth member, which would be Paul Williamson. I'll go ahead and make a motion to do that.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next is Planning and Zoning Commission. Council, we have Charles Mati as the only applicant. I went through his resume, he certainly looks like he's qualified for the position. What's your pleasure on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Move approval.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mati is now appointed to that position. Thank you very much for that. Are there any other committee reports, Mr. Iavino?
Yes, I have my appointment for Bruce Hoffman for the Citizen Budget Advisory Review Board.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else from council on the committees? All right. Leads us to item nine, Public Hearings. We have this evening, nine A, the first reading and public hearing of ordinance number O-18-01 relating to the medical marijuana. Ms. Hall, I'll now open that hearing.
Ordinance O-18.01, Act 01, an ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, relating to medical marijuana treatment centers. Rescinding ordinance O-Act 17, Act 01, amending the Land Development Code, Article 22, Language and Definitions, amending Article 5, zoning district regulations, providing for severability, conflict codification, and an effective date.
All right, thank you. Will you be giving the presentation? Who, who we doing?
I'll start it out, if I could, sir.
All right.
We're presenting this tonight, this ordinance to clean up the ordinance that we have right now, out on the books, to bring this new ordinance into state mandated regulations.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, staff summation?
Ordinance 1701 was not in, is in conflict with newly enacted state regulations. We are proposing ordinance 1801 to bring us into compliance with that. This is first reading.
All right, thank you. Now, I'm going to close the public hearing, and that'll lead us up to council discussion deliberation. I'll go ahead and start, if that's all right. I have some, some serious issues with, with this ordinance, and the issues with them aren't that I'm opposed to medical marijuana dispensaries, it's just the fact that in this ordinance, we're essentially trusting the state of Florida, that they're going to do the right thing going forward with medical marijuana dispensaries. We've seen time and time again how the state of Florida has, has taken away the authority, and I think, quite frankly, I think they're doing that by, by passing a law that's, that's told us how we have to zone these dispensaries. And essentially, it says, this ordinance says that we will now allow medical marijuana dispensaries anywhere in the city of Florida. And I think the only place that there is a conditional use would be under the riverfront.
I think there might have been something within 500 feet of a school as well.
Yeah, well, yes.
Obviously.
Yeah, yes, and so, yeah, and I'll get to that, because I think the, the state of Florida contradicts itself in their own law by saying we must treat them the same as we treat pharmacies, but then in the same law, saying we have to keep them 500 feet away from them.
Exactly.
So, so I don't think it's an all or nothing situation here, that we have to have it shoved down our throats. So, do we, do we say to the, to the public that we're not going to, to listen to your desires, of which a great majority of people voted in favor of, of medical marijuana in Sebastian and in the state of Florida? So do we say we're, we're either, we're, we're going to just say, "We don't, we won't listen to you," and we're going to go against your will, or do we just allow it to, to go basically anywhere in the city? And I think that the only place that there's a conditional use, other than 500 feet of schools, is along the riverfront. I think there, that, that's a terrible option for us, because we're trusting the state of Florida is going to regulate these things in a way that makes it, makes these things good, if I may. I don't know the word to use, but I mean, it's like, we're, we're trusting that they have to go through and get licensing, and then there's going to be a certain quantity, or there's going to, you know, are we talking about, if you recall pill mills, where there's doctors sitting in a, in a, in a building, and then you go in and you see the doctor, you get the prescription, you walk next door, and you get your pills. And, and so, we're just trusting that the state's not going to let that happen by passing this ordinance, and the state often has these grandfather clauses, where they say, "Well, if the city already has this ordinance in place, then we'll allow them to keep that." And they've done that with the, the issue on vacation rentals. They've said, "If you already have a vacation rental ordinance in place," now, I'm sure they're going to try to take that away, but, but, so, so we're trusting the state, and I certainly don't do that very much, but I think there's another option. I don't think it's all or nothing, and I guess this question is for staff. My thoughts on it are, if we have to treat a medical marijuana dispensary the same way we treat a pharmacy, why don't we consider placing pharmacies under conditional uses, which would then have the medical marijuana dispensaries under conditional uses, which would then require every one of them to come to this council prior to approval? And I guess that's, that's a question for staff. Ms. Hall, do you, do you have any response for that?
Yes, well, I want to make just one quick correction. The proposed ordinance, actually, for commercial waterfront, as it is a permitted use, and none of these is a conditional use.
Anyway.
The, in the current land development code, all of, there is no category for pharmacies right now, in the current land development code. We've, the City of Sebastian has been treating pharmacies as commercial retail for, for zoning purposes, and so, in this proposed ordinance, there is, the, the proposal is to include pharmacies in the definition of commercial retail, and then add medical marijuana treatment facilities, I'm sorry, medical marijuana dispensaries as, as another enumerated One could enumerate out pharmacies, or pharmacies as, or, and medical marijuana dispensaries, or include within the definition of pharmacies, medical marijuana dispensaries, what have you, and make that a conditional use in whatever zoning district that, that council wishes. However, you know, you just kind of have to consider the impact of that particular, of that particular move, because, again, right now, we have a bunch of pharmacies in the City of Sebastian that we, we potentially could be creating a bunch of nonconformities, number one, I don't know, depending on what the particular situation would be. And actually, one thing that staff, other staff had brought up, is that pharmacies are, at least in this municipality, frequently in the form of either a drugstore or part of a larger supermarket. And so, we'd have to figure out whether, when we define, as we define pharmacies, whether that will include those types of pharmacies, or whether we define pharmacies as something different, or what have you.
Well, again, if, if a pharmacy wants to, to pop up on the corner of five, say, 512 and Fleming, and it's under conditional use, we can approve that pharmacy. P&amp;Z can, they can go through the process, and I would state that it's not the City Council who would be putting that burden on pharmacies, it's the state of Florida who would be doing that. So, if, the additional burden would simply be going forward with an approval. Now, the fact that there's, there's already pharmacies, I can't see how going to a conditional use for a, an approval for a new pharmacy would harm the current pharmacies.
Couldn't we just grandfather them in?
Correct. That's, that's a good question.
If I may?
Please.
What the, what we were concerned with, besides a change of pulling certain pharmacies out and identifying them for this specific ordinance relating to medical marijuana treatment centers, is that it's kind of a veiled go-around of what the state is trying to preempt us from doing. So that is one concern. The other concern is, let's say, and all these comes in, and they want a pharmacy. Now, the pharmacy is a special condition or a conditional use, but the grocery store is not, the, the commercial retail is not. How do we treat that? I mean, that was just one of our concerns. In addition, yes, let's say the Walmart is grandfathered in with their pharmacy, they're grandfathered in, but we don't want to create a condition where we are now creating nonconforming uses in the city also. So we just need to be careful, and if, if, if this is something the council wants us to go back and look at.
Yeah, it needs to be revisited.
And see if we can pull these out, specifically pharmacies, specifically defined, and then determine what kind of conditions we would put on them, we cer, we would certainly be happy to do that.
Well, just, from, from my standpoint.
Yes.
For me, I, I think that there's no way I could pass the ordinance as it is, because essentially, it does not, it doesn't give, it gives no control to the city regarding medical marijuana dispensaries. Now, it's unbelievable the amount of grief I'm catching, because a dollar store is going in on 512. Could you imagine if every third building along 512 was a medical marijuana dispensary? And don't think it won't happen, because if Sebastian's the only one that allows for the medical marijuana dispensaries, people will be coming from far and wide to go to those stores, so it will be very lucrative. So I think we need to do everything we can to protect ourselves. Council, Albert?
I, I absolutely agree. I actually had the opportunity to meet with a, a resident, and she has, not to discuss her medical background, which I won't, but she has an ailment that causes her to use medical marijuana, different forms of it. I mean, obviously, we're not talking like she goes inside and she smokes a marijuana cigarette, but she uses a CBD, CBD oil portion of it, I believe, and it's very beneficial to her. She doesn't use narcotic medicine, pain medicine, and it helps her out. After a lengthy discussion with her, and also apparently Susan Adams, Commissioner Adams has done some research, every medical dispensary is not the same. Apparently, there's better ones that are set up, that have more security, and they're built better than some banks, and then other ones that aren't so much. So, I, I agree with Mayor Hill that we need to definitely revisit this before we, we vote on the ordinance.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yeah, just establishing that conditional use isn't going to solve the problem, because the conditions can't be onerous. I mean, you can't create conditions that are designed to stop someone from doing this. It won't, it won't work, it won't, the, the state law is pretty clear. We either don't have pharmacies in the City of Sebastian, or we have pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries, or we don't have medical marijuana dispensaries. It's that simple. And the vast majority of the voters in Florida approve this. Now, maybe that vast majority of the voters in Florida might be willing to disapprove the action the state took when they vote for their legislators the next time, because the state did absolutely take away the home rule capability of a city to do this, and they've made it very difficult for us to do it. I, I have one concern about the commercial riverfront residential district, not necessarily about the 512 corridor, although I definitely don't want to see every third store on 512 with medical marijuana discrepancy, dispensary, but I think the 512 residential district, I mean, the commercial waterfront residential district, if you look at the description and so forth, is, is primarily aimed at mixed use, which is residential in nature, and I, I'm not sure that's a great place for this. It may not be a great place for a pharmacy. The, the commercial uses I see in that corridor are more along the lines of fish bait shops, and bars, and, and, you know, tourist tracks, tourist shops, and so forth. So, I would like to see the, the staff at least go back and rethink the commercial retail less than 5,000 feet in that district to determine whether we need to close that up, and that way, we can disallow medical marijuana dispensaries in, in that riverfront district. That's basically, the commercial waterfront residential district is along Indian River Drive. US-1 is commercial rock riverfront, so, but that is along Indian River Drive, and I, I just, I don't see that as a place where I'd want a Walgreens, let alone a place where I'd want something else in there. So, I think maybe they need to do this. I, I personally think that the voters have voted on this, and if there's some way to tighten it up a little bit and stay within the nature of the state statute, and not have it look like we're trying to gerrymander it, which means that somebody will take us to court, it is very profitable business, and they will take us to court, and when they do, we'll be stuck. So we have to make sure we stay well within the nature of that law on that, on that process to do that. I don't think we can gerrymander this thing a gigantic amount, so. I'm, I'm in favor of, I've seen this again for the commercial waterfront residential district, and that could actually be done between the first and second reading. That doesn't have to be a, a new first reading of the, of the thing. And if they can come up with ways to, to redefine pharmacies, so that it, it doesn't look like they're trying to get around the state law, then that can also come back to us in a second reading on this, because we're in a good position right now, since this is the first reading. We can ask for changes before the second reading.
I, I just wonder, is it, I mean, is time of the essence on this? Where, where we have to go forward and approve something that I certainly couldn't approve as it's written, and hope that staff comes back? So if time is not of the essence in this, I would prefer to see it come back to us at a later date, once the concerns of council and all of the discussion that we have tonight is heard. Now, this went through planning and zoning with very little discussion, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Now, this went through planning and zoning with very little discussion, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
We have an ordinance on the books right now, though. Someone could actually apply under our existing ordinance.
Correct.
With a site plan to the city to open a medical marijuana dispensary, right?
That's correct. And we would have to treat them as we would a pharmacy. In other words, we would have to treat them as commercial retail because of the nature of the preemption statute and because the municipality has... Because we wouldn't implement our existing ordinance as it presently reads because that is in violation of state law. So we would have to treat them as we would treat pharmacies, which is currently as commercial retail.
Any thoughts, Don?
Well, I don't want to see them in the Riverfront District either. So I'd like to see that taken out of there for sure, if there's a way to do it. I don't want to see them down there at all.
Yeah, I mean, the thing for me is it's not a them that I'm afraid of. I'm not afraid of them. What I'm afraid of is that we have no ability to limit the number of them. I mean, again, I am not opposed to medical marijuana. I think that, as Councilmember Dodd stated, it's something that's been voted on by the people of the state of Florida and its law. My concern is this beautiful little city that we have. Now, we have governments surrounding us who are banning this. And so when that happens and we approve it, we become Sebastian the dispensary. So we have no limits on how many we can put in under this ordinance, which we won't be able to...
Yeah, under the state law, we cannot limit the total number.
Exactly. So we need to really start lobbying our state legislatures to really... I mean, that's a discussion for later, but this is something that concerns me greatly. Under the current law that we have in place, it's the same, right? They could just come in and go anywhere. We couldn't limit it. They wouldn't even have to go to P&amp;Z. If, Ms. Hall, what you're saying, they could just apply to the city and get it done.
If they're in the correct zoning area, again, we would treat them as commercial retail. Look at square footage, what have you. But yes, that's correct.
So the state has nullified our previous ordinance?
No, they just didn't... They didn't nullify it. What they did is they... We have to follow the ordinance, which says basically in a commercial district. And then we have to follow the state's rule, which says any place a pharmacy could go. So if a pharmacy could be built there and it's a commercial district, then someone can open a marijuana... A medical marijuana dispensary. And if they don't do it in a new building or with a major modification, all they need is a license. They don't need a site plan. It doesn't go to P&amp;Z. None of that stuff takes place. They just walk in and get an occupational license, revamp their space. They may need a building permit to revamp the space, but they do it that way. There's no review by P&amp;Z. There's no application of the land development code to that process.
I mean, do you have any idea how many opiates are prescribed down there in the Riverfront District right now with all the doctors that are down there? That's a huge problem. We're talking medical marijuana here, which can kind of combat the opioid problem. A lot of elderly people get hooked on the opiates because there's no other source that they can use. And it's been proven that the medicinal marijuana can alleviate some of that pain as well as the addiction and a lot of the problems associated with that. You're not going to have medical marijuana all the places all over here. Now, the problem's going to be in a couple of years when the recreational marijuana comes here. How are you going to fight that? Because the money is already in Tallahassee. We have passed this ordinance before. We looked to tweak it a little bit. I've talked to several residents who rely on medicinal marijuana. It's going to be tightened up. It's not going to be like people think it's a head shop. There's going to be marijuana leaves hanging out there. This is prescribed. They got to go through a lot of things. I think we're trying to beat a dead wort here, want to tighten it up. You don't want to have it anywhere?
I don't think anyone has said that, Councilmember McPartland. I don't think anyone up here has said that we don't want it anywhere.
I think that's the way it kind of seems. Because we brought this here before and we passed it. We wanted it a little tightened up. And now, all of a sudden, it's going to be every third store in the Riverfront District is going to be medicinal marijuana.
That's not what anyone said. The state of Florida...
I think that's what we said.
Thank you, Mr. McPartland. I appreciate your input. But the state of Florida actually are the ones that, since we've passed our ordinance, has caused us to have to go through this. Not us. Everyone up here has been in support of medical marijuana. We understand that the voters have said they want this. That's not what we're discussing. We're discussing making sure that we protect our town. Now, when you have all of the other governments surrounding us banning it, we have to do our due diligence and make sure we protect this city. That's all I'm saying.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 0-18-01 with Mr. Dodd's input on what should go forward.
Okay, that would be the Commercial Waterfront Residential District.
Yes, sir.
Modifications.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
All right, any more discussion? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayavino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Can... Mr. Mayor, may I just ask, is February 14th sufficient to have the second reading? Will staff have the revisions?
Second reading?
They say it is. They indicate yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. Leads us to unfinished business. City Attorney search. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Our last meeting in December, actually, our only meeting in December, I was instructed to set interviews for city attorney candidates for city attorney candidates that council had selected. Those interviews were conducted on Monday, January 8th. And staff is standing by for council's direction.
All right, thank you. I will take some input from the public at this time. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue?
Thank you, sir. Damian Williams, 1623 US Highway 1, Sebastian. Business owner, resident of the community for over 30 years. Just real quick, before you make a very important decision and you add somebody to our charter officer roster, that remember the ad that you put out. The ad read, "Minimum five years experience in government law and board certified." It's bad enough. I see in the agenda that we're going to have a city manager leaving soon. So there's going to be a second charter officer that we're going to have to replace. And this is not something that we should take lightly. Because I sat here in a meeting and I watch a vice mayor lose the opportunity of becoming mayor because he got bad... The board got bad advice from the sitting attorney who was sitting here, sitting in for the evening. And I thought that was injustice. It was not correct. And this is not something you need to take very lightly. You need to have an experienced attorney sitting right there giving you good advice. That attorney is not giving you personal advice. It's giving you the city advice. And it keeps us out of litigation. That's all I ask. Thank you very much. I do like Sherwin and I do like Stokes. Thank you. Not that it matters, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this issue? All right, thank you. Counsel, in an effort to get the discussion started, I will make a motion to direct the city manager to start negotiations with Mr. James Stokes to become the next city attorney for the city of Sebastian.
I second that.
All right, counsel. I've got a second. Thank you, sir. Discussion, counsel. Mr. Ayavino?
Mr. Mayor? I thought that all four of the applicants did a wonderful job on their interviews. And we have some very good candidates. And I would also recommend Mr. Stokes for that position. I felt that he had the board-certified experience and everything else that was required to do a good job for our city. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Ayavino.
As Vice Mayor Kitchen said, I think every applicant did a great job. It's not easy to sit in and be interviewed by five different people in a merry-go-round fashion. God knows, I've sat on enough interviews over my career. And generally, you hope that you get better at them over the years. And clearly, in my 40s and 50s, I wouldn't plan on sending on yet another interview to actually interview for a city attorney position. So my hat goes off to everybody. I actually... Mr. Stokes was my second choice. He's board certified as well. I actually went with Mr. Sherwin, who also is board certified. I know that he lives in Arcadia. During our interview, when I spoke with him, he said that he was willing to relocate. He doesn't belong to any specific law firm. So that means that he's actually willing to come here to the city of Sebastian, become a resident, and work and live here. I found that his organization, his background, his research... He actually researched every one of us. He researched the city. Just things that he said during his interview. And then if you... In comparison, and not that I'm saying that Mr. Stokes would be a hard second for me. I just... If you look at Mr. Sherwin's application, he's got a 50-page application here. He's board certified. He's got an extensive experience in municipal and local government, inter-local laws. He comes from a long family of attorneys. Not that that means anything, but both his father and uncle, I believe, are attorneys. I just felt that he was really well put together. He represented a very large county, as did our prior attorney. Came from Fort Lauderdale, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Griffin, was that correct? What... Was it Fort Lauderdale?
Miami-Dade.
Miami, I'm sorry. Okay, so large county. With that being said, so he's got the experience with a large county. He's more than qualified for the position. But what got me was that he was actually willing to up and move and come here and he doesn't belong... We're not getting anybody else but just him. It's personalized to me. So that would be my choice.
Mr. Stokes was one of my top two, so I'm willing to support that. I think there's ample support from the three councilmembers who were involved in seconding the motion and so forth. So I just... Just call a question.
All right, that being said, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayavino?
We're voting on...
We're voting on Stokes.
I'm going to say no.
And Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
And Mayor Hill?
Yes.
The motion carries four to one.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stokes is here. Yes, I would like to... Thank you, Mr. Stokes, for being here. Congratulations. I would agree with what everyone has said on the candidates. You know, when I was going through and looking at them all...
That's not Stokes, is it?
Oh, he's not here? I'm sorry. Mr. Stokes is not here.
He's there.
Yeah, there he is. I'm sorry, I pointed that way. I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Stokes is here. Mr. Stokes? Thank you for being here. Sorry, I pointed it the wrong way, Mr. Stokes. But all four candidates definitely were stellar candidates. They were selected from a large group of candidates by this council to do interviews. And the interview, I was very impressed by every single one of the people that I spoke with. And when I looked at the experience that they all had and the government experience and the education they all had, I was sort of, you know, blown away that we could get the quality of individual that we got to apply to come to work for this city. And when I looked at it, I looked at it from a few different areas. I looked at who has municipal experience. And certainly, being certified in municipal law was very important to me as I made my decision. Secondly, being an individual that I believe that we can work with from a financial standpoint. You know, when I look at firms, it scares me a bit when you start talking about hourly billing and stuff like that. But then, I look, you know, when you have the experience, you're right. Unbelievable amount of experience, but Mr. Stokes is local already. He's already here. He's worked at CREs in this area. I believe he's going to do a great job for us, as I believe any of the four would do for us.
Can I just make a final comment? I'd like to say this to all the applicants. Please don't take this personal. And Ms. Hall, I appreciate all your hard work. You have helped the city out immensely. And I'd just like to say thank you for all your hard work and everything that you've done for the city.
You're here.
I also second that.
All right, thank you. All right, counsel, that leads us up to public input. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on any issue not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Black shirt. Please give your name, where you live, and speak into the mic.
Good evening. Brent Timmerman here. Small matter here, but might have as much drama as future things to come. Been a little... Live on 467 Watercrest Street. Basically, my backyard backs up to the ball field. I've coached Little League for 18 years here in Sebastian. Last three years, we have taken our... Players came to me and the parents, and we have moved to Vero, to another league. What I'm looking at is we've tried to... Sebastian area Little League baseball seems to have a stronghold on the fields. We have tried to use those fields on the weekends when they're not in use and we have been run off, had confrontations, things like that. I'm a firm believer if... Don't come to you guys complaining if you have not tried to be part of the solution. I have been on that board six or seven times over the last 18 years. Seven years ago, we had a group of moms. Pretty much Jimmy didn't get to play. They came in, got a stronghold on it, and voted. Baseball coaches and people that ran that league... If you guys have been here for a while, you used to know, you know, six nights a week, there were vehicles parked to the street. You know, we had games on all four fields. That ran till, you know, nine o'clock at night. Four years ago, I was on the board. Basically, we did not have a ball season. The board abandoned everything. We pulled it together within three days, had some sort of a season that we put together. We had things moving in the right direction. And again, we had some moms that were originally on there. I brought some old coaches back in that had been on the board previously. And we got the things moving. What we wanted to do is there's a league in Vero Beach, Cal Ripken. They have roughly 350 players in the fall, which is the slowest season that you'll have. Springtime, they're right at 450 to 500 players. And my son, as with all my team, wanted to move there. Because the last two years I was there, we had to travel because it was all we could do to get up enough to have one division in each league. Last year, you know, I brought it there, tension like, hey, let's merge. And I hate to say, they're on their last leg. They've been on the respirators for the last five years. Everyone has left and went to Indian River County, Cal Ripken, to play baseball just due to the level of playing. And we don't have enough teams to play two teams there. So what I was looking at, is there a way that we can... Because I see we're doing some lights on the field. We've done... I've done tons of work over there, you know, when we were with the Little League, getting things, you know, prepped and ready. Is there a way that we can possibly bring another group in to utilize those fields? We've got to get it... You know, they say they're for the kids. I tried to bring, you know, let's merge. We didn't want to abandon Sebastian area Little League. Let's merge with, you know, Cal Ripken because they own, you know, I guess it's property lines from Fort Pierce to Vieira, somewhere in there. And, you know, we have ability to have tournaments there like what we used to. Memorial Day, Labor Day weekend, back in the good days. You know, we played baseball year-round there. So what I was thinking is, is there a way to do it? You know, I brought this up. I was voted off the board that meeting. And they said they didn't like my idea. I don't know what the hangup is. We have six or seven moms there that are on softball. And they changed their code. Usually, we could go to the library when they had their annual meeting. Now, they will not let you in unless your kid has played that ball and you're in good standings. And what is good standings? We went with several players. We were not allowed in. So that's not accomplishing what's best for the kids. I know on social media, you can look now, they're giving away free memberships, half price. And they don't have enough to form a team in each age division. I know last year, they were putting eight, nine, 10, 11, 12-year-olds together to make one team, which for baseball is dangerous. You know, a 12-year-old kid... is dangerous. You know, a 12-year-old kid can rip a ball a whole lot quicker before an eight-year-old. He's playing in the dirt. You know, he can't even get out of the way of it. So I'd just like to bring it to your attention. I was supposed to make it up here in November, but work called and didn't make it. Had some other coaches that were with me. Like to put it on the agenda for next month to see if there's some option or what we can do. I'm not gonna go too far out, but I have talked with other people in Vero that would like to come up and present, you know, what options you guys have. Because we've got the fields. I mean, they're gorgeous. You know, they're not like they were eight years ago, but we have the ability to where, you know, if we go, come to you and say, listen, we're having tournaments every weekend, and we've built it back up, you know, it justifies spending the money on it. You know, because we're, again, we're here for the kids. And again, I'm attached for this one, so I'm sure I'll probably get plenty of, you know, Facebook or social media, you know, reprimand for doing that. But I've had the coaches and the players come back, because I've got people from Felsmere. I know we have, we're about 75 players that drive to Vero three times a week just to play baseball. And they're like, Brent, please go up there, see if there's anything we can do to get that, you know, released. And we'll work with them. You know, I mean, if they have, if they need Tuesday night to play baseball, that's fine. But, you know, we're, like I said, we've been, you know, harassed, kicked off the field, and, you know, had coaches, you know, call here, there, and others, like, you know, what are y'all doing here on Saturday and Sunday? I'm like, it's not used. You know, we need somewhere to practice, and it's unofficial. So, but if there's anything y'all can, you know, come up with, address, or whatever we can help, you know, let me know, and I'll be happy to meet with Mr. Griffin, or whatever I can do to, you know, see if we can bring that forward to, you know, get us back to where we were, you know, eight, nine years ago.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Let me make a couple of suggestions here. First, getting tired of Mr. Griffin, okay? Because maybe we can have some sort of a baseball summit, and you can get everyone together in your office and try to figure this out. Because it's, you know, we can't force Little League Baseball to do anything from the council level, I don't believe. I am, I too am disappointed in where Little League Baseball has gone. And we've discussed this for a couple of years on this council. So maybe your input, sitting down with them and the city manager, and trying to figure out what we can do going forward. Now, I don't know what the agreement is exactly with the field. So during season, I'm not sure if they have 100% rights to those fields.
I think they have exclusive use.
Okay, so we, so if we have some competing league or something to that effect, we need to have some discussion on that. So I would suggest getting with the city manager and trying to figure out what we need to do going forward. And he will definitely put, point you in the right direction. And then, if we need to get something on the agenda, I'm sure he'll, he'll guide us that way.
Sounds great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Didn't you want to speak?
Something that's on the agenda.
Ah, very nice. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Damian Williams. There's a few items I just want to follow up on. I see that the legislation for the state started yesterday, and I see other counties have items that they're pushing through for their special projects through the House and through the Senate. And I didn't see anything from the city of Sebastian. Is there any comment, Mr. Mayor, as to why we're not going after funding that we need here in this community? Is there any reason why we didn't put any special request into the legislation this year? I will take that as a no, because we have, we have issues here. We have canal walls that are crumbling. St. John's wants to help. There is First Amendment money that's available that they're starting to give out. And if we have plans, and we have phases, and we can start completing what we've already started, it could avoid some litig- litigation down the road. If we get a major rainfall, like they've gotten in Texas, we're gonna have flooding. We're gonna have problems. So why not take advantage of Mr. President Joe Nigron, since he's in the seat of power? Why didn't we address that? That's just one of the issues. I mean, and that's a very critical issue, and I know it's not something we can tackle immediately, but we could do it in phases. Now, this council had talked about doing this. And yet, I don't see any direction to your staff or to your city manager to start drawing up phases and plans so that we can get with St. John's, because they have funding available. And there is some stuff going back and forth between possible homeowners and St. John's, that there's been things that were said by your previous engineer that's just not correct and not true. This needs to be opened up, and it needs to be addressed this year. And we need to have a timeline, and we need to have a plan. So obviously, we missed this session, but can we get our act together for the next session? You know, I'm sure Mrs. Mayfield and Mrs. Graul, our legislators in the Senate and in the House, would love to hear from us. Please, Mr. Mayor, we need to stop the spraying of anything that's toxic, that's chasing wildlife in our canals. That's another issue that we need to address. We need to have a list of items that protect our community, that we can move forward with, that we have plans to address. And I just don't see that happening here. And I know we're getting ready to lose a city manager. I want to, by the way, I want to thank Joe for the, over 10 years that he's given our community. Joe, you've done an excellent job with your leadership. You've gotten a lot of things completed and done. Your office, your phone, has always been open to me. And, you know, I can be a pain in the butt, and I'll admit it, but you've always returned a call, and you've been always very professional. God bless you. God bless your family. And please come back and visit us. I want to commend Mrs. Hall as well for putting her application in. She's doing a good job as intern city attorney. Maybe there'll be another time. I think that she has potential down the road. I just think that we need to have somebody on staff that's well-qualified, because we're gonna be going into some times where we're gonna be looking for some good advice. Last and final thing, Mr. Mayor, Parks and Recreation. I've asked that you look into the money that's been assigned to the ball fields. I checked with two municipalities. They asked to not mention their names, but maybe somebody on your council here can direct a request to the city attorney to make sure that the funding that's put into the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund is appropriated properly. It is not for repairs and replacement. It's for purchasing new parks. And I'm not asking you to take my word. I'm asking you to look to your council, your legal council, because there's also money being pulled from the zones, A, B, C, and D, to be used for other things as well. And before we get an audit, I'd rather just get it straight. Let's confront it now, and we can move forward. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any items not currently on the agenda? All right, seeing none, that will lead us to new business. Item 12A, city manager resignation and retirement. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. At last year's performance evaluations, I informed four members of council here tonight that 2018 would probably be my last year. And from time to time, I would refresh that with council. When Mr. Iovino was elected shortly after that, I informed him of the same plans. Life circumstances are such that my wife and I are in a good position to, and some family responsibilities. We're in a position to now say it's time for me to retire. The vehicle for me to do that is to resign my position. So in your agenda packet, I have a resignation letter that asks for a resignation date, retirement date of 9 May of 2018. I'm asking that you consider that and act favorably on that. In your agenda packet, I put in three possible scenarios for a city manager replacement. One would be a direct appointment by the council. Another would be an external search conducted by our city HR department. And another one would be an external search conducted by a professional search firm. Four years ago, when I was appointed city manager, council utilized the services of the ICMA Range Rider Senior Advisor Program. That was a free program. And a gentleman from Vero Beach headed that up, and we thank him for that. That will not be available during this search. I've been notified of that. So what I have included also in the packet is obviously the retirement resignation letter effective May 9, emails from the senior advisor coordinator informing us of their non-participation on this go-around, a practice city manager solicitation that we could use if council directs staff to utilize HRS, City HRS, as for a search, and four proposals submitted by some professional search firms. Also, my contract between the city of Sebastian and myself is included for your edification. So I'm standing by for your direction. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I very much appreciate, and I very much appreciate the professionalism you've brought over the years to the city of Sebastian. In every capacity, you've worked, you've done it as would be expected, as professionally as could be expected. And I believe you've gone above and beyond in that. So it's unfortunate that we have to go through this, but we do. So council, I am all ears. Mr. Dodd?
Yes. There's nothing in any of our regulations, the charter or any of the Code of Ordinances that requires that the city manager actually be a resident of the city. I'd like to start a conversation. And the reason for that is that I'm all in favor of using one of these search firms to find a replacement city manager. I've actually got my own opinion about the one I like the most, but we can talk about that later. But I would like to talk about the residency issue as it relates to the possibility of some current staff members who might want to apply for the position. I'm not interested in, personally, in hiring a outside firm and then have any current staff members who want to apply actually do that. I think that that's, we should rule that out first. So I'd kind of like to personally pick one of these firms tonight, but put, give a week or a two-week window of time before we contract with them and provide an opportunity for internal staff members who would like to apply, to actually apply for the position. And let's decide if there's any interest on the part of the council on any one of those people before we go outside and look. The reason I bring up the residency thing is that I know that at least two of the people who possibly have the qualifications to do an internal application don't reside inside the city limits. And if we feel that that's a requirement, then that's fine, that that would, that would let everyone know exactly what the rules are for the application process, if it goes as place. I'd just like to find out if there's anybody internally before we go outside. I'd hate for it to come down to the end of the road and have somebody internally put their name in the hat. And we've now paid a firm $20,000,000 to search for people, and we realize that the person, the internal person, might be the best choice for us. That just, that seems something we might want to alleviate by just waiting a week or two weeks and providing an opening for them to apply.
I guess the only question I would have, and that is, and most of these firms are talking about around 11 weeks, 12 weeks to get this thing done. Does that, would that push us into a situation where we would be needing to go with an interim? I agree with you 100%. You know, I mean, the last time we went through this process as the city manager, it was ultimately the same exact issue. We had, and this is the reason the Range Riders, I believe, aren't going forward, and giving us a hand. So, you know, I agree with what you said. I just want to make sure we're not gonna put ourselves in a more difficult position going forward.
Well, and we have some people in the staff that could certainly fill in as an interim city manager, even if we're not, if we're not interested in applying for the job permanently. So it would be great if we could, if we could find the new city manager and have him in place before Joe leaves. But if it turns out it can't be done by the 9th of May, for whatever reason...
Oh, sure.
I think we'll be okay with one of our current, or maybe even two of our current people filling in an interim position...
Sure.
...in one way or another. Because we do have some qualified people to do that. And that's one of the reasons that I'd like to see about opening it up to the internal applications first, is to, I'd hate to rule them out by not opening it up. And I would hate for that someone to come back later and say, oh, gosh, I wish I had applied, you know, kind of thing. So that's just the reasoning behind what I'd like to do, or like to propose.
Councilmember Iovino?
Iovino.
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 There you go.
Eventually, I'll get that right.
So I agree. I don't think we should spend the money. And first and foremost, this is why I don't think we should spend the money. I'm a big proponent in and of promoting from therein. You have somebody that already works here. We already know how they get along with regular staff. They're aware of the ongoings and procedures within the city already, and we should definitely look at that. And I'd like to, Councilmember McPartland's idea about the assistant city manager. I think that if we're gonna look at somebody internally as a city manager, that we should also entertain looking at somebody as an assistant city manager and just doing this in one big swoop and get this up and running. The longer that we wait, the further that we get away from it, and the quicker that we get somebody here, especially if it's an internal candidate, that allows Mr. Griffin to train that person and bring them up to speed and continue with the forward momentum that the city's had. I mean, face it, 2017 was a good year. It really was. The city's done a lot of good things. Taxes went down. People seemed to be very happy with a lot of things that are going on in the city. And I'd really just hate to just slam up against the wall and just stop the momentum, because we spent 11, 12 weeks looking for a city manager outside, then worrying about this large contract and availability, and do we really know anything about them? And then find out six months later, as Mr. Dodd said, that that's not who we really want, because they just don't have a true love for the city. And if we have to lift the requirement of them actually living in the city, I can understand doing that as well.
Councilmember McPartland?
Well, I think it's about time we do appoint an assistant city manager. And I think Mr. Griffin might have somebody in mind who could go along while he's got four months left on the job and see how things are going. And as Mr. Dodd alluded to, we have a few people that could sit in, fill in, if that doesn't work out, as an interim city manager. And we can decide if we don't have the internal candidates, we can farm it out.
Vice Mayor?
I honestly think we need to farm it out, not because I don't like anybody who works for the city, but because I've worked here for 30 years, and I have seen in that long tenure promotions given to people who had no experience for that particular position and faltered at it, and still remained in that position and caused a lot of problems. So I'm concerned about that. I think this is a position that needs to come very highly recommended to us. It needs to be scrutinized, and we have several companies here who will do that. I don't think we should do it in-house. We didn't do the city attorney one in-house. I mean, I know we don't have other city attorneys besides Joe. Obviously, he couldn't apply for that job. But I'd like to see it get, I'd like to see us pick one of these companies and farm it out and get it taken care of, so we can get someone in here to work with Joe before he leaves. And then, if that person feels they need an assistant city manager, then we can post that position in-house if we have qualified applicants.
I would ask, though, you were not saying that you would disqualify anyone from applying for the position through the firm?
No, absolutely not. They're welcome to apply through the company that we hire.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think all great input. I think that this is very important to the city, to the future. We've got a new city attorney that's gonna be starting, brand-new city manager. And these are the ones that are gonna take us forward into the future. And I really, really strongly believe we need to get it right. And that may very well be someone internally. And I haven't really thought about option four, which is the Dodd option, which is pick a firm, and then, you know, maybe even see, I mean, again, we haven't gotten any word from a single person internally as to whether or not they want the position. So, I mean, we need to have that before we, you know, go forward. But I do like the idea of saying, you know, let's pick a firm, and let's start that process. But in the meantime, while we're doing that, do a quick internal search. I don't think it'll be that difficult.
I don't think you can, I don't think the firms will agree to that. You know, they can apply to the firm.
Well, again, if we do the search prior to...
Hiring the firm.
Hiring the firm.
Well, then you're gonna put us at a disadvantage, because the firms are talking about taking weeks...
Right.
...to get us a position.
So why can't we just post it for a short period of time, even a week, and see if anybody internally is interested or not? And then if they do it, they are. If they're not, then we have our answer.
Well, I think, though, you know, I guess this is a hard...
I'm sorry.
...a hard question.
I just think it's a position that needs to be filled through a firm that has searched for other city managers for different cities all over the state of Florida and other cities.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree. And I believe that, you know, if you look at what we had from the applications from, from the city attorney search... search, those were some very, very qualified candidates who had a tremendous amount of experience in, in, in city managing cities. I'm sorry, in, in, in public law, municipal law. So I do think it's important that we, that we at least put those candidates who would be internal candidates who have no experience as a city manager, because I don't believe, do we have any one who has served as a city manager on our staff?
Yes, sir.
Who is that?
Mr. Kilgore.
You've been a city manager?
You've been the interim city manager, yes, on more than one occasion.
All right. So we have one who's been a city manager. So we have someone with some experience. But again, you know, I would welcome Mr. Kilgore on, in there. I would welcome him in the application process, through the, through the process to, to really get in to see and what kind of experience and all of these things. So I am, I am one person up here on the dais. And I, I'm waiting for a motion from someone to, unless you want further discussion on this. Mr. Dodd, do you want to discuss further your idea?
No, I, I'll make a motion. I move that we select Colin Bessinger. Am I saying that right? Colin Bessinger as the search firm. And that the city manager, the current city manager, accept their offer, and that we provide a one week window for anyone internally to apply for the position.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. I'll now take input from the public on this motion. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Damien Giliums. This is something we have to get right the first time. We cannot rush this. This is something that we, we as a, a council should probably discuss, what do you envision in your next city manager? You should probably have a discussion on job description, job salary, requirements for the job. You need to be talking about putting something together so that your staff, when they write their ad and send it out to the world, and to include people that are on staff now, they can also apply. But I don't think we need to be spending money with an outside firm. We did work with the Ranges before. I think if you put the right ad, like you did with the city attorney, you're going to get 20 to 325 applications, maybe more. If you put the ads in the right place, and I'm sure your human resource sources department will know where to place those ads. But I think you, as a group, need to decide, what are you looking for in a city manager? Do you want somebody who's going to be here for three to five years? Do you want somebody that's going to be here for five to 10 years? Do you want somebody young who's going to grow with the community for 15 to 20 years?
Exactly.
Who's going to take us further into the 21st century? Do we have somebody that's capable technology-wise? Are we thinking about that? Because government is changing. We need to go to government 2.0. And we need to think in, in long-term, not just short-term. And yes, Ken is probably an excellent person to assist Joe until we find that right person. But it needs to be done professionally. It needs to go out. I don't think we need to be spending any money. There are enough city managers, I'm sure, out there that would like to apply, that have the, the requirements and the resume to, to run a city of 22,000 people and, and have a background in, in everything that we need help in. Roads, drainage, canals, working waterfront, CRA, and the list goes on. And bringing our, our, our environmental assets into order, recycling. We have a park that's sitting right back here. All I see is solar panels going up with the environment, the birds and the bees and the flowers and the trees, and not cutting a check to FPNL for 400,000 every year that we could be, and we need somebody who has that kind of vision. We don't want somebody who's run a city and they're going to run it the same like they, they ran somewhere else. We need to be different, unique. And you guys have to have the discussion about that before you direct your staff as to what you're looking for. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public who should speak on this issue?
Just a quick question. Being that I'm relatively new at this, would there be anything that precludes us, or maybe I should direct this to Ms. Hall, anything that precludes us from actually getting input from the actual city manager in regards to who we pick?
Well, yeah. Because he, we, he works for us.
Okay.
I don't think he should pick his replacement.
I mean, there's no, there's nothing that would preclude.
I mean, he could say comments, but I don't think he should be the one picking his replacement.
I didn't say that. I just, input would be improper to ask input from the city manager as far as if.
No, I think it's appropriate. I don't think there's a problem with his input.
And I say that only with the idea that Mr. Griffin's worked here for a long time. He knows the city. He knows what the people want. He's done a good job at it. Hey, Joe, this is who we, this is who the consulting firm picked. What would you think about this? That's all I was saying.
So ask Mr. Griffin any question you'd like.
Yeah, well, I, I think that's a good point. And I'm, actually, it's not part of this motion. I was going to bring it up after we decide what direction we're going to follow. But I talked to Joe earlier about a part of this with whoever is selected would be, try to have a work, a workshop with the council and with himself and with the representative of the selected firm, in which we talk about what their selection process is, and we talk about the things that we feel like that the council would like to see, just so they don't come back with eight resumes and we go, oh, gosh, that's not what I wanted. We have set up a workshop. But I think Joe would be certainly an integral part of that workshop if we do that. So I didn't, I didn't bring it up as part of this, because we haven't actually selected a firm yet. So I didn't see sense in complicating the whole thing with that. So, yeah.
I got you. But you're asking, are you asking what his thoughts should be on the firm that we choose, or whether or not?
No, I'm asking that after we choose a firm, then he would be involved in a workshop.
The selection of who would be the next city manager as far as their experience, what they have to bring, what they do. I mean, I understand that we're hiring a firm to do that. But the firm, we can direct the firm to say, look, this is what we're looking for. But someone who actually works here knows, knows us, you know, knows us from outside of sitting on this, this panel, and knows what we want and what the people want, because he's been here, what, I'm sorry, 10, 11, 12 years, sir? Okay. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that. And if you go through the, all of the, what was submitted to us, each of them have interviews with, with each individual council member, interviews with the public, interviews with the Chamber of Commerce Director. So they're all going to, every one of them has that in their proposals.
Understood.
Now, on the motion, the motion is for which group? It was for?
Colin.
The Colin group? Now, that's, I agree with the motion, but I don't necessarily agree with the, the firm.
Also.
So, so I would have some questions on the firm itself. My, my, I have some questions for staff, actually, on this. There is a proposal in here that's at $15,750 from Mercer.
Mercer Group, yes.
Mercer Group, which is essentially a local, local group. They're not local, they're nationwide, but they are local. And I wonder why we wouldn't consider that, being that that is the, not to exceed amount of $15,750 versus?
26?
Yeah.
500?
And so.
Colin is 26, 500.
Right. So that's, my question to staff is, the $15,750 is, it says in here that that covers all expenses. It doesn't, of course, include bringing candidates in and housing them, although none of them do. So I would wonder why we feel that this firm is worth 11,000 additional dollars. And I guess I'll throw that to you, because you're the one who chose them.
I'll, I'll cover that. When I reviewed the proposals, the, the firm that struck out to me to have the, the best opportunity to do a wide search and to come up with valid external candidates seemed to be this, this Collins firm. They have a gigantic track record, record of finding and employing city managers in cities the size of Sebastian and larger. I didn't see any of that in Mercer's proposal. So, and it's not that I felt that Mercer was not qualified to do the work. I just don't necessarily, personally at times, think that the cheapest proposal is the best proposal. So I, I think I've, in my own mind, I sat down and said, okay, now you've cited, you've decided you like the firm that's probably the most expensive. Why do you like them? And I really like them because of the presentation and the results that they've come across with. If we're going to do an external search, we really want to find, we really want to know that we're getting the best qualified candidates, and we're getting a search by people who have, who have satisfied cities our size with, with candidates that they've hired. So that was the reason for that.
Yeah, I, I agree that we need to hire the best firm, or the, the, the firm that's going to give us the best quality with, for the amount of money that we spend. I just, if I'm not mistaken, Mercer's done a vast majority of the searches in the state of Florida for city managers.
Well, they, they, they've done a lot of work in Florida. I just didn't, the proposals that we were submitted, that, that's what I went by. I've actually used Mercer in my prior life before. And I was never dissatisfied with them. It's just that their proposal was not up to par with the one that we received from the other, at least two of the other candidates.
And any other discussion on that? I mean, I just find that, in reading the Mercer proposal and seeing the value of the dollar, it just seems like $11,000 is an awful lot. And, and I agree with you that this, the, the firm that you've decided or you want is outstanding. And, but I just don't, it's hard for me to swallow $11,000. Any other discussion, Mr. McPartland?
I just wanted to hear Mr. Griffin's input on anything, and his thoughts on assistant city manager as well.
Mr. Griffin?
The reason I put these four proposals in here as is, rather than picking one out and making a recommendation, was I didn't want to be looked at like I was trying to direct this. I really think that council should, should, this should come from council, obviously it will, and that the four that, that I solicited proposals from, from all have good reputations. There are some that have better reputations in the state of Florida that are, that are here, frankly, that, that Mr. Dodd selected. But they're all good. They all have these reputations. I get these, find myself on, I guess because of my position, I find myself on these email, emails. And I, and the most I hear from is, is Colin Bessinger. And just their presentation style and what, how they present a, a town, a city is very impressive. So, but then again, I am not recommending any of the four. I think they'd all do a good job.
Okay. Any further discussion on this issue? The motion is Colin Bessinger. I will simply state that I, I think that, as the city manager stated, we, we can't go wrong. That's a total fixed fee of $26,500 for the search. All right, we have a motion. Roll call, please.
The motion has a one week in-house thing in it.
One week, one week.
I'm not going to support that. I think if they want to apply, they can apply through Colin Bessinger. Because they have the right, they do background checks. They do everything for us.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel member Dodd?
Yes.
Counsel member Avino?
Yes.
Counsel member McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
No.
And Vice Mayor Kitchen?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Yes, sir.
Can I review what we just, what just took place? First of all, my letter to council. I want to affirm that, or again, an affirmation that the 9th of May, 2018 will be, council agrees that will be my last date. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Number two, am I to delay some kind of contractual, contractual agreement with Colin Bessinger and Associates for one week? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what the motion was, yeah.
That's what the motion was.
But let's, go ahead.
The, the, what I'm getting at is contractual agreement, I should be bringing that back to council at the next meeting, which would be at the, on the 24th of, of this month, so 24th of January. So what I will try to do is have that, that contract presentation to you on the 24th, along with a representative from CBNA to make a presentation. Is that acceptable?
You'll have, yes, you'll have everything available to us at the next council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And any applications that are received internally?
Any applications during that, during that period from any internal candidates?
Sure.
Correct?
So essentially, you're going to go into a contract negotiation, bring that contract back, and bring any applicants that are internal to council at the next council meeting, so we can have discussion at that time.
Correct. Thank you very much.
That still leaves Councilman McPartland's suggestion of assistant city manager, which we.
No, I would welcome that input from the city manager. Would you like to discuss what Councilmember McPartland suggested as far as an assistant city manager going forward?
If assistant city manager was to be selected, that would be something that frankly would not come from council, but would be a, a budgetary thing that the city manager would, would do to elevate somebody to that position, or, 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 or hire somebody into that position. I don't know that that comes from city council.
Does not.
We're, we're within three months of hiring a new city manager. I would think that the new city manager should hire an assistant city manager. I don't, I don't think that we should do that.
I disagree. I, I, why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we have somebody?
I mean, if we're going to hire a boss, then the boss's selection of their senior staff, they, you know, they should be able to decide who they want to be their assistant city manager.
Right. I mean, the fact is that, that this council hires three people, a clerk, an attorney, and a city manager.
Yes.
And it's up to that city manager to determine what, what, what staff he needs and in which position he needs that staff.
Okay. But what we're doing right now is directing the city manager to hire an assistant city manager.
I don't think that's appropriate in any way. We, I don't believe that we actually, I don't think that our charter would allow for us to direct a city manager to hire different positions.
But I just heard three council members say hire a city, assistant city manager now.
Not, staffing issues are not up to council.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with what the charter says. I'm telling you what I heard. Our, our city, acting city attorney, did you hear that?
Yeah, I, I actually, I heard discussion regarding the possibility of having an assistant city manager, but I did not hear a direct, other than a suggestion from Mr. McPartland as that being something to consider.
Okay, I'm fine. If she, if that's what she heard, I'm fine.
And in fact, council can't direct that. So, an assistant city manager.
All right. Are we clear on that? You got all that mud, right? Outstanding. That leads us up to item 12B, resolution number R-18-0, FDOT JPA for airport security cameras and gate access upgrades. Mr. Griffin?
This is a, an initiative taken by Scott Baker, Airport Director and Facility, Facilities Director, about airport security cameras upgrade and gate access upgrade. This is the JPA that's going to provide the funding for that. This is an 80-20 grant, $80,000 project amount, $64,000 coming from FDOT, $16,000 coming from the City of Sebastian. We are recommending approval.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion, or any input from the public on this issue? Seeing none, council discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel member Avino?
Yes.
Counsel member McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Counsel member Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Item C, approval of municipal election agreement. Ms. Williams?
Yes, this is the annual election agreement, and it's going to be a big ballot next November. So it's only 50 cents a voter for us. And Supervisor Swan would like to use our chambers for early voting, but it requires, that requires rescheduling or canceling some of the meetings, including two of your council meetings. So I would like to hear what you guys say about that. So I would like to hear what you guys say about that.
Yeah, are those the last two council meetings leading up to the election?
Pardon?
The, the council meetings that would be, uh, have to cancel, are those the meetings that are just prior to the actual election, right?
Um, the, there's gonna be a primary in August, so it's the second August meeting, August 22nd, and then October 24th. That is the one right before the election.
Okay.
And the one right before the primary, I think, is your other question?
Right.
The one, the regularly scheduled meeting right before the primary.
Okay. Uh, council, uh, this is something we go to every, every year, uh, or every so often, and, um, I guess we're gonna, gonna lose a couple of council meetings, do we wanna adjust those to, to different dates? Do we wanna go ahead and cancel them? I'm ears. Ms. McPartlin?
And basically, we, we've canceled them in the past, if something comes up, we can always reschedule the meeting at that time.
I agree. I agree. Uh, do we need to have, because the, the memo that we got late, does that affect this at all?
That's her formal request to use the chamber.
Alright, great. Counsel, what's your pleasure on item C?
Uh, move approval.
Second.
Of the agreement, and standing by on the, rescheduling the council meetings?
Canceling the council meetings.
Canceling them, okay, totally canceling them.
The approval is, is the, is, uh, the contract plus canceling the council meetings, that would be affected.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Leads us up to city attorney matters, Ms. Hall?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let you know, or just, um, express my appreciation for being able to serve as interim city attorney for the past few, few weeks, for a few months, actually. Um, you know, I came into this in, in somewhat circumstances that I think are less than ideal for the city, um, and, um, I appreciate the trust that you've put in me. I completely understand the decision that you make tonight, I do not take it personally. I think you had some great candidates, and I think that's great news for the city, and I wish the new city attorney well, um, and I'll get together with, um, with the, the city attorney and, and the city manager, or the, the soon-to-be city attorney and the city manager, and work out a schedule, but I wanted to thank each and every one of you. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you, as well as city staff. We've got tremendous staff at the city, um, and, and, and people who really have a tremendous customer service attitude, and, um, are all kind of rooting for, for the, the same team and the right team, and trying to make this a better community. So, as you all know, I grew up in this community, it means something very, very special to me, I operate a business here, and I, I love the city of Sebastian, I appreciate the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I would probably be able to speak for all five of us to say that, that you're stepping in at that difficult time, uh, you've done a fantastic job for the city, and we very much appreciate you and the service you've provided. Thank you. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Uh, two things. One, um, as you know, uh, we have 100,000 dollars in our budget, uh, this year for engineering, planning, uh, for the eventual move of the garage compound over on 512 and Veterans Way over to the west side of the airport. Um, so staff is involved in, uh, meeting with our CCNA-approved engineering consultant in, uh, getting that started. There was another meeting today, which, uh, was fruitful, and they're moving along, but one of the things that, uh, occurred to us was, uh, the Rosen Road to 512 intersection, which at times can be a real bottleneck, uh, we put that, that garage compound out there. I just don't want to see that, uh, add to the overload of that intersection, so I would ask, uh, councils, uh, help in, um, petitioning the MPO, and to see what they can do to, uh, get that going, either the widening of Rosen Road or the improvement of that intersection at 512 and Rosen Road, especially southbound Rosen, right turn, uh, onto, uh, westbound 512, that's, uh, that's a real issue. So, uh, if we could, our MPO representatives could remember that at the next meeting, please. And I've talked to Phil Mattson about it, he's aware of the problem, so, uh, hopefully we can move that along. Uh, the next thing, um, is to, uh, talk about my departure once again. Tonight is a, is a great example of, uh, staff, uh, being loyal to the, uh, to the city manager, and, um, frankly, at times, not to be too sappy, but it, it waters the eyes because it just shows on an ongoing basis how these folks have, uh, have dedicated themselves to this city and to, uh, and to, and to me in a, in a certain way, and I appreciate that, I appreciate, uh, the support I've gotten from council, um, more than you know, and, uh, certainly the citizens and, uh, all of our employees. So thank you very much, and that's all I have, sir.
Alright, thank you. I would, I would agree, we have an amazing staff, and you've done a great job of leading that, so thank you. Ms. Williams?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Alright, thank you. That leads to council matters, Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Um, I just wanna thank Cynthia for everything that she's done, and, um, I appreciate you stepping in when we needed you, and I hope to see you around town and at the council forums, set for the chamber.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Dodd?
Yeah, I got, uh, actually, one request to go. Uh, the, uh, can you give a status on the engineering study that's being done on the ball kids? It was mentioned tonight earlier that we're not doing it on that, I don't think we are. Can I give a status on that?
Yes, sir, I will.
And then, uh, your mic, your mic.
Oh, okay, sorry. I, I just asked Joe to provide a status on the engineering, uh, that engineering report on the ball kids, because we are actually doing an engineering study that includes bringing St. John's Water Management District into the process and trying to get approvals from all that, all that, all that stuff. Uh, also, I, uh, became aware that, uh, an email that I responded to, uh, by an individual who asked to be part of the attorney's, um, interviews, that when I responded to it, I hit reply to all, which means that the council members also got a copy. I'm aware that under the sunshine law, I'm not supposed to do that, and it was a definite oversight on my part, and it was not an attempt to sway anybody on anything. I just wanna bring that out and make sure that anybody who happens to question that knows that I've, I've said that, so, and that's it, okay?
Alright, thank you very much. Councilmember Yavino?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Nothing? Alright, great.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Nothing, sir.
Alright, thank you. Um, I, I have a couple of questions for staff. There's been a lot of concerns about the, the approval of the Dollar Store at Chester's Gap location. I've been getting beat up pretty bad about that. Now, quite frankly, I would suggest that the dilapidated, uh, gas station that was there, um, you know, as I would consider it, uh, a nest for crime, quite frankly, the thing's been closed for a decade, and it's just, you know, I see what's going in there as an improvement, and whether it's a Dollar Store or, uh, a 7-Eleven, or, I mean, you name your, uh, retail, do we have control over the name of the store that goes into any of our commercial locations, as long as they conform to our codes?
As long as they conform to our codes, uh, the free market being what it is? No, sir.
Do, do we, so, so it's not up to us if Dollar Store has a matrix that says they can put 12 stores in a city with 24,000 people? That's not our, it's not up to us? In other words, we can't say no to them and yes to Talbot's, or yes to somebody else?
As long as they conform to our codes.
And are there any laws, uh, currently, or codes on the books that would, that would, would make it impossible for a Starbucks, or a Roadhouse, or a large chain restaurant like a Red Lobster to come to the city?
No.